I've called this meeting to order. Welcome to tonight's meeting, everyone. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming?
Here.
Vice Chair Davis?
Treasurer D'Varde?
D'Varde, here.
Secretary Hatcher?
Here.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Here.
Trustee Milliken?
Here.
Trustee Peck?
Here.
Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Move.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, thank you. Next is to recess into closed session to discuss collective bargaining. Do I hear a motion to go into closed session?
Support.
Support, thank you. Any discussion? None. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Treasurer D'Varde?
D'Varde, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Milliken?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Okay, trustees, head down to room 120. Reconvene our meeting. Do I hear a motion to reconvene the monthly meeting?
So move.
For a second, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, thank you. We are on tab A, approval of the minutes. The recommendation is that the board approve the minutes of the April 22nd, 2025 meeting as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
Move. Support.
Right, thank you. Any discussion on the minutes? Go ahead, Ruth.
I have just a kudos. On the second page, the remarks from the Board of Trustees, that's more information than we usually get in that category, and it was very well done, characterizing the remarks of the Board of Trustees. And I liked it, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on minutes? All right, thank you. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, citizen participation. First, verbal communications. We usually have the WCCEA up first. Is Ms. Lee available?
Hello? Good evening.
Good evening.
Due to a family commitment, Allison Fornier is unable to be with us tonight. My name is Nikki Lee. I've been here before, second vice president and chief negotiator of the Washtenaw Community College Education Association. I'm here to speak on her behalf. The spring/summer semester began last week, and with ongoing transition to Canvas, we are in the process of gathering feedback from faculty about their experiences so far. As we are only a week in, we expect to learn more in the coming weeks regarding how the platform is working for both instructors and students. At this time, we recommend increased communication with students, both those currently enrolled in the spring/summer courses and those registered for fall. I should say, spring/summer courses that are going to start May 27th or June, the next sessions, because much of the early feedback indicates that students are facing challenges with the shift from Blackboard to Canvas for existing students. So ongoing communication from the college, highlighting those training opportunities for students, will go a long way in supporting smoother transition for our students. In other news, we are pleased to share that last Friday, May 16th, the Washtenaw Community College Education Association and the college administration reached a tentative agreement, woo-hoo, on the 2025-2028 through 2028 master contractual agreement. Once we receive the written agreement from the college, we're going to present it to our board for a vote. And I would like to extend my sincere thanks, not only to my team who participated, but to all of the administrators for their respectful, collaborative, and productive efforts throughout the process. As we head into the summer months, we remain committed to open communication with the college and to working together to meet the needs of students, faculty, and staff. Thank you from myself, Ally and Dave.
Vanessa, were there any written communications received? No? Okay, thank you. All right, we're moving on to special reports, strategic plan goals. President Blanca?
Good evening, trustees. As you know, this is... Oh. Good evening. It's our annual update on our strategic planning process and on the accomplishments that we have made this past year. Strategic planning is our blueprint, and it's our commitment and legacy that we leave to the future students that come to this college, because that ensures that every decision we make is looked at with the perspective of what's coming next and how will this decision impact that. So I am very thankful to you for your leadership and your commitment to supporting the fact that, as trustees, you're stewards of not only the fiduciary process, but also the vision for the college to make sure that we are in a good place for generations to come. This evening, we're going to begin with Julie Morrison to give us an overview. And I just want to assure you, I know you've heard me say this before, don't worry. We're not... We've done a very good job to give you a concise report. And we will be giving you a concise report, so don't let these scare you or the audience. But actually, they're kind of for us, and I'm sure for some of the board members that have been along this journey, it's really something to see where we started. And when you look at this one, you know we did not have any of that. We didn't have anything that was on that board. And when we did this one, we didn't have anything that was on this board all the way through. So for all of us that started or came along the way, it's a good feeling to see how far we've come together. So Julie?
Good evening, trustees. We are, as President Blanca mentioned, we're very pleased to be here tonight before you, giving our annual update on our strategic goals and updates of accomplishments for the year. As she mentioned, we do this every May, and this is a great opportunity for us to think about what we've accomplished over the years and over the year and what is coming next. So I'll be speaking tonight along with Provost Blakey, EVP Tucker, and CFO Barnes, who will all be taking a different part of the presentation tonight. So first of all, talk a little bit about strategic planning at the college. We do this every year, but it really helps us to discuss what the process is and how that is working and what makes a process helpful for us in our planning. So why strategic planning? Really, it's to identify goals and initiatives that align with the mission and promote the college's current and future success. It supports infrastructure for our decision-making and also for our operational planning. It's not just long-term strategic planning. It also informs our operational planning every day. It's an expectation as a best practice. As you might recall, when President Blanca was hired, the board at that time was seeking a president with strategic planning field, because that has more and more become an expectation, certainly of accreditors, but also of business industry and our partners, that we do have a practice in place. It enables us to address our internal and our external opportunities and challenges. And just a few of those listed there, shifting enrollments and demographics, legislative impacts, certainly, changing employer and job market demands, and then changes across higher education, which can take a lot of forms. Could be technology, instructional delivery, innovations that are coming down the pike. And strategic planning helps prepare us for those things and address them. And finally, overall, the changing needs of our students, our community, our business, and industry partners. Strategic planning at WCC, you have the boards around you, but a brief history. We started in 2012. Again, when President Blanca was first here, we developed a three-year strategic plan process, and that was shaping our future. And it was a very holistic experience involving people both inside and outside the college, looking at research, finding out what our partners expected from us and needed from us. And the strategic planning group at the time, as you'll see in a minute, came up with eight key strategic priorities that are planned then and since then have been built around. So again, it's a three-year plan. In 2016-19, we had Shaping Our Future Together, which kind of continued the planning process with new goals. 2020-2023, we launched Shaping Our Future Success. As you can tell, that was kind of our COVID plan. We presented it to the board about a month before COVID hit, and it was actually very helpful to us that we had that plan in place, ready to go, especially since online learning was a big piece of that. And then the plan cycle we're in currently, 2023 through the 2026, Shaping Our Collective Future in Transformational Times. And that's what we'll mainly be talking about tonight. So there are two common threads around our strategic planning process, and the first are those eight strategic priorities I just mentioned. Every one of those three-year cycles, we have grounded our decisions and our actions and the goals that we've devised really around these eight strategic priorities. They're intentionally broad, and they really infuse decision-making at the college. And they're professional development and organizational health, student success and satisfaction, innovation, agility and responsiveness, visibility and branding, workforce development, partnerships of all kinds, funding and resources, and community engagement and development. And the second common thread that infuses everything we do with strategic planning is, of course, mission, vision, and values. And the truth is, if we are looking at a potential initiative and it does not align with the mission, vision, and values, it won't happen. We won't do it. So those two pieces, those common threads, really help define what kind of planning we do. And again, the boards are around you. I'll go through these really quickly. This is the first one, Shaping Our Future, from 2012. And we did this the first time we did a strategic planning cycle, and we've done it every three years or so since, bringing in a facilitator to kind of visualize what we're doing. And that first strategic plan, you can see that a lot of the initiatives that have become really institutionalized here came out of that plan. Things like the Entrepreneurship Center, professional development kind of holistically provided instead of in silos. Funding, we had an eight-and-a-half-million-dollar funding campaign that we had not had anything like that prior. So you can see that this process really did inform a lot of the things that now we consider as part of the college. The next cycle in 2016-19, that cycle kind of continued some of the initiatives from the first cycle and broadened them out. I mean, you'll see that public safety was one of the initiatives that came out of that cycle. It's the first time we started talking about online learning. 2016-2019, we started talking about online learning as part of the strategic plan. In 2019, we had something of a different planning issue that we came up with, which is also here, the infrastructure that supports student success. And this was a retreat that we held for the board to talk about, in particular, the digital transformation of learning on campuses and what are the technology needs and supports we need to continue to have successful student experiences. And while not specifically part of one of the three-year strategic planning cycles, it was kind of critically important to how we proceeded after that. And then in 2020-2023, again, I think of it as our COVID plan because of when it started. You'll see, again, one of the major initiatives was online learning, teaching and learning, along with initiatives around having a carbon-neutral campus, so sustainability issues that we wanted to address. And again, more with professional development and also planning for a master plan process, which we did go through. And then finally, our current board and our current strategic planning cycle, Shaping Our Collective Future in Transformational Times. This one is a little different in that it really focuses on four big, major, broad goals. They still align with those eight strategic plan, strategic priorities that we mentioned before. And we'll be talking about that a little bit more, but it's really kind of a more focused plan on these specific goals. And just as an example of what the strategic planning process has done for us since we started this back in 2012, just a few of the initiatives that we have that are really due to this planning process, supporting the development of new ideas and new initiatives. So the Teaching and Learning Center, a lot of our current student success initiatives came specifically out of our planning process. Advanced transportation and mobility initiatives. The Entrepreneurship Center, which I mentioned earlier. OERs, Open Educational Resources, that came out of this plan and has saved our students over $10 million since 2017. Increased fundraising and the Emergency Fund for the foundation. Community engagement, Eastern Washtenaw County in particular. Development of a holistic advising model. You've heard about that in the last year or so. Public safety, as I mentioned before. The expansion of online learning and services and creating an online learning environment that mirrors the campus environment. Our Nursing Center for Excellence came out of the strategic plan. As I said before, sustainability and carbon-neutral initiatives. Our Canvas implementation is embedded in the strategic plan. Revision of general education several years ago. And expanded K-12 partnerships have grown due to some of our initiatives. And esports was a direct result of our strategic planning process. That's just a few. And we do come to the board with special reports every year that frequently are not specifically providing updates to the strategic plan per se, but are referencing initiatives that came out of the planning process. So tonight's agenda, we're doing things just a little bit differently in that tonight, we're really emphasizing data and how that works to support strategic planning. What's the evolution of data use at WCC? How has it changed over the years? And what is the impact of data on our student success initiatives? We'll talk about some of the new data tools that we've been using that have really helped with data analysis and understanding in the last couple of years. And also just data availability and infusing it in operations, which is a goal in and of itself as part of the strategic planning cycle. And more in tonight's agenda, we'll also talk about goal highlights for the current strategic plan cycle. And those four goals I mentioned, the first of which is creating a data analytics structure to support decision-making. So to give you an idea of how important data is to what we do every day, it is its own goal as part of the strategic plan, but it also is infused in the other goals that we're presenting tonight. Implementing targeted student success initiatives. And then we'll talk about creating the best-in-class online campus learning experience. And then finally, we'll talk a little bit about the new campus master plan to meet changing needs of students and campus, which is our fourth goal. And as I said before, all of this is predicated in meeting our mission, values, and vision. And so now I'll turn it over to you.
I'm just wondering if there's ever been an initiative by someone that was rejected because it didn't match the values and the mission standard?
Yes. Not totally rejected, because usually what we do is take that initiative and say, how can it align with this? Is there something you can do? Is, you know, let's talk more about it. But yeah, no.
So I will turn it over to Provost Blakey, who will be talking about data analytics and the structure to support decision-making.
Good evening. Have me first. So let's talk a little thing about how we do different data requests.
Can I just say one thing before you start? I'm sorry, I know. Well, when we look at this goal and we talk about data, it might seem like, okay, what's the big deal? You're going to use data. No, it's a big deal because we had to put in an entire infrastructure to support data and how we would use it across the whole college. We didn't have that originally. We just had reports. They were good at the time, but they weren't reports that you could, you know, see on-time reports or daily reports. So the infrastructure that we have created is what is the strategic goal and how we have moved from reporting of just iPads data and things like that to what you're going to hear now and how we make decisions today based on data. I'll stop talking. Okay. She's giving me the look, stop. I'm not... I got it. I get excited because it's good.
So just to talk about a few things, like so, our Institutional Research Office, just over this last year, these are some of the ad hoc data requests that they provided data to faculty, staff, and administration. So persistence, we had over 110 requests. We did things like persistence and retention rates, success rates, graduation rates and award count. Sometimes it might be a department that's looking for an accreditation, and so they need that data for their accreditation report. Or sometimes it's just an area looking for different, you know, how things are, different programs that they're doing are being impacted. Another sample request we looked at was, where are the students who get the Pell Grant distributed across our county? And certainly, we expect that, you know, perhaps students on the east side of the county were accessing Pell Grants more frequently. But this graphic shows that really is the case. And so as you look, as you head out to the west side of the county, that the concentration or number of students who are actually using the Pell Grant is a lighter color, as indicated here, the number of students. And then graphically, that gives you, you know, kind of, this is kind of what we anticipated was happening. But this report really graphically showed that this is what's happening. Another ad hoc request we looked at is, what's the distribution of students that are taking our online classes? So this is a report academic year 2024. I mean, you can see that we have students in every single state in the United States that are accessing our online classes. We also have students taking students in countries, international countries also. And again, this was a major initiative of ours. Because of our, because we have our quality online programming, because we keep our tuition rates low, and you can see that we have students across the United States. Again, the color of the state indicates the concentration or number of students who are accessing our online classes. Certainly, we're seeing increases. Five years ago, we probably did not have students in every single state. But we have certainly had increases. Some of these enrollments are due to our partnerships with United Association of Plumbers and Pipefitters. Those students are located across the United States and are required to get their associate degree to turn out in the program. But certainly, again, this has been a focus of ours to really try to increase. Some of these individuals might be guest students. We have a lot of guest students that come in from the University of Michigan, and they may be, they're located in all different states. They go home for the summer and continue to take our classes. And so this is a variety of students who are accessing our classes. Yes.
Why do you do those number breaks for the colors?
This number break here?
Yeah. Because I noticed if New York had, if it went to 140, New York would be dark blue.
Those number breaks were just, you know, to try to get, you know, just to get a variation in the color to show a concentration. But those numbers were kind of like just based on, you know, the number 139 and then breaking to 140 so that you could have, you know, a couple dark states. But those were numbers just that were randomly picked by... Again, when we put that data in, it'll graphically kind of infer numbers, but then we can adjust those numbers if we need to.
I looked at the color of the map, and I said, wow, New York, this is dark.
Right, but that's, yes. But you can see this is a big, very big range down here.
When I looked closely at the, which I couldn't see up there, but I saw it over here taking off my glasses.
Correct, correct.
And I'm sitting there, really, it's more like...
Correct. That is correct. Institutional Research Office, we also conducted many surveys this year. We did a readmit student survey this last summer. And we also did an AI usage survey this past fall, where we surveyed students, faculty, and staff. As we were transitioning to Canvas, we did a faculty survey on how training was going along in Canvas. This year, we participated in the Community College Survey of Student Engagement, the SSI. We administered that this winter semester. We do our graduate follow-up surveys, so students who are graduating, we do that twice annually, following up with them approximately six months after they graduate to find out where they are doing with their job opportunities, if they're following up with education or going on to what jobs they have. We also did a non-returner student survey this past winter. If we look at the kind of data that we would collect on that readmit student survey, you can see over here that we looked at, what is your preferred course? You know, if you are coming, if you want to plan to come back and take classes at Washtenaw, we would ask them, you know, if they're planning to come back, if they weren't, why? But if they were, when did they, what type of classes did they prefer to take? Do they want in-person? Do they want blended? Do they want online? We also asked, what time of day? If you're going to take an in-person class, what time of day do you prefer to take? Again, this helps us planning in terms of how can we better meet the needs of students who are returning to take classes with us. For our AI usage survey, we looked at different things of how am I, you know, how familiar am I with AI as a tool? Am I using it either in work or through my household items? And you can see, this is actually, sorry, faculty and staff, but students, and you can see how they answered that survey. We will continue to use this survey. AI is a very evolving tool. So we plan to do this survey again to see just even over the last year, how much change have we had in terms of how people are using or interpreting or thinking about AI. We also participate in the National Community College Benchmarking Project, NCCBP. It's a voluntary reporting of key data points. I think what's helpful for us to participate with this is that it compares our data to other community colleges nationally and within the state of Michigan. Approximately 200 community colleges participate nationally, and we have 18 community colleges who participated in this project in 2024. The metrics are more tailored to community colleges and the population of community colleges, unlike the reports that we do for iPads, which is the Integrated Post-Secondary Education Data System, which we've talked about before. iPads is the required federal reporting, because those reports are really geared toward more four-year institutions. We are looking where your graduation rates are calculated only on first time, full-time, degree-seeking. And when 75% of our students are part-time, you can see the majority of our students are not going to be used in that calculation. And so NCCBP really gives us a better sense of how do we compare to other community colleges, again, who may not have the majority of their students coming in as full-time students in the first semester.
Go back to that slide. My question is centered around MCCA, Michigan Community College Association. Do they get any of this data information?
Well, they will if they... Well, they will if they, so again, there's eighteen community colleges. So, um, if the community college shared the data with them, um, they would get access to it. So it's a voluntary project, so it's not being exposed, but it is shared with just the schools that are participating in the project.
They're aware of this?
They should be aware of it. Yes, there's eighteen, there's eighteen of the community colleges in Michigan that are participating.
You don't know who they are, do you? Or do you, do you know what school?
Um, I can get that list. I don't know, I don't know the eighteen, I don't want to rip off the eighteen. But I could find that list for you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, my other question is, uh, so where does this information go? Is it just a, is, is that goes into archives or, you know what I'm saying?
What do we do with it?
Mm-hmm.
This is the information we use to plan, to evaluate how we're doing.
Right, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying is that, um, we have this information is for planning purposes.
Yes.
Correct. I'm just wondering, does this information go anywhere else outside of?
Not all of it, no, because it's really kind of like data that we should be using to plan. It's not evaluative, you know?
Sure.
It could be, depending on how someone wants to interpret it. But our intent, intended use is to, for continuous improvement.
Right, for, just for us.
So that's why we don't share that data.
Okay, well, I have something else to go on, but that's okay. I'm done with it.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Who operates the benchmarking project?
Sorry?
Who operates the benchmarking pro, project?
Who operates it?
Yes. Who runs it?
You mean who, the main?
Yes.
Who's the main?
What organization?
The net, it's a, it's a nonprofit national community college benchmarking project. So I'd have to figure, I think that it's based out of an institution. Um, Institutional Research Office gathers all the data. So they put the defining metrics out, and then we submit those metrics. And then they put the, they'll give us the data back. So again, if you're participating in the project, you're able to get access to the reports back as they compile that data. Does that answer your question?
Yes, I'm, I was just wondering whether or not the project is at risk, at a funding risk or?
It's, it's not, it's not a federally funded project, no.
Is that something that we pay to participate in?
Yes, we do. So this will give you an example of how we look, so the NCCBP, the three-year national aggregate report. So this is the percent of full-time, first-time students that completed or transferred in six years. Um, and so you can see that, um, our percentage was at sixty-five percent. Um, and that put us at about the seventy, about the eightieth or eighty-fifth percentile compared to other community colleges that were participating in this project. This also shows the percentage of part-time, first-time students that completed or transferred in six years. And so again, um, again, if so, again, we're again in the eightieth to eighty-fifth percentile compared to the other community colleges that are participating in this survey, this project.
It says two thousand seventeen cohort, it's over six years. So this report came out in twenty twenty-three.
Yes. It would have been completed, they would have had through twenty twenty-three. So the data, we would have been putting that data in in two thousand twenty-four.
And then how often does this come out? Does it come out every year?
Every year. It would be the next cohort. So the next cohort would be the two thousand eighteen cohort.
But we, it's twenty twenty-five now, when do we get that data for the twenty nineteen?
No, because they have, we have to go through the twenty-five year.
Okay.
So the next year would be the two thousand eighteen cohort that we would report, be reporting on.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So Light, Lightcast Analyst is used to evaluate our current programs. Um, I think we had a demonstration of this by, um, Dr. Shane Redman for you earlier this past year. Um, it looks at labor market information tool. Um, it also incorporates, um, it looks at data that we incorporate into our current programs. We can look at, um, program-specific metrics like average income, projected job openings over the next five years, um, average turnover rate. Sometimes jobs may have, be turning over a lot, which would show kind of how many openings there are. So that's an important metric to have. Uh, we can use the data from Lightcast along with our internal metrics for data, such as our program enrollment, our program retention, the number of wards, awards that we're conferring, and that we use those to evaluate the overall strength of our programs. So some of the data you can see that we are able to get out of Lightcast. Um, this is a, this is looking at our welding tech program. So it compares completions to other public two-year schools in southeastern Michigan. So you can see over here on the left, it has all the schools in southeastern Michigan that have a welding program. It shows the number of completions. So you can see we have the highest percentage of completions. And then it also shows, um, the kind of the market share that we have as well. We use this data. We also looks at how, the job openings. So if you look at southeastern Michigan, um, it shows the different job openings for all the different counties in southeastern Michigan and the number of positions that are selected. So you can see, um, Wayne County had the most, followed by, um, Oakland County. We also, out of this tool, are able to look at the top companies posting jobs. Again, this is all for welding technology. So we can see the companies, the top companies. We can see the number of unique positions. Sometimes if they're posting it in multiple, um, places, if they're posting in Lincoln and in Indeed, um, sometimes it's hard to get a sense, but they're looking at, these are unique jobs. So even if they're posting in multiple places, you can get a sense of how many actual openings do they have? They're not double counting. Um, it also has the posting intensity. Approximately, how long did it take for when they had these jobs posted, did it take this company to fill those positions? Another thing that's really helpful is to look at the skills needed on the job postings. And also, how do those skills appear in resumes online in employee profiles? And so you can see, um, the darker arrows here talk about how frequently I'm seeing troubleshooting on job postings for welding tech. How frequently am I seeing customer service? The lighter blue area shows how frequently are we seeing that particular skill listed on the employee profiles? This is really important data for our career services area, for faculty that are working with students in terms of as they're applying for jobs. What are some key skills that employers are looking for in a welding technologist? So again, so Lightcast, you know, again, we can look at the, it ranks industries and jobs. It looks at the skill areas. It shows us the other institutions that we're competing with in terms of the programs that we're offering. It, it ranks us in terms of our graduates and how it looks like compared to other regions. And then it also like what companies are hiring. The other thing, if we look again, and we can also look at this for southeastern Michigan, we can look at the whole state of Michigan. But here, it tells us that the industries in southeastern Michigan that have the highest concentration of jobs and how that compares to the national average. And so you can see from some, for some areas like healthcare, we have a higher proportion than what the nation finds in terms of concentration of jobs that are available in southeastern Michigan, which is not surprising when you think about the University of Michigan Hospital, the, uh, across the street hospital, the VA hospital. But that's a really high-producing job area in our county, southeastern Michigan. We can also, also see the largest occupational groups by the number of jobs. So what kind of jobs are available? Not only the industries, but the type of jobs are available? And how do those compare to what the national average is? Um, again, by, by types of job? Again, we also look at the in-demand skills based on job postings. And so again, what's the national average on some of those? Um, those job skills, like whether it be marketing, auditing? And we can, again, we can see compared to southeastern Michigan, compared to nationally, how are those in-demand skills needed? Again, helping our graduates, career services, figuring out how can we best advise students on what kind of skills they need to be good employee, employee prospects for southeastern Michigan. The IR office also has developed data dashboards. Um, it can provide, um, commonly requested data on pre-made dashboards. It allows us to drill in on data on those reports. So things like head count, head counts and credits by academic division or various student segments. We've also looked at success rates. We've also looked at retention and persistence rates. And again, those dashboards are, are more flexible and allow us to drill in without, rather than just looking at stagnant reports. I'm now going to transition and talk about how we are using data and targeting and implementing some of our student success initiatives. Our care team, um, which is our WCC's BIT team. All colleges and universities are expected to have a BIT team, which is our behavioral intervention team. At Wash'In'All, we call our BIT team the care team, because we care about everyone. Our care team is a cross-functional team. It's comprised of LPCs, which are licensed professional counselors. We also have student services administrators on the team and also our campus resource officer. We have two of our officers, um, the chief and the deputy chief on our care team. Um, our focus is to do early intervention and provide support early on before an issue becomes a problem. From two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-five, um, you can see that we had an eighty-seven percent increase in our care team referrals. Um, you can see here, the numbers have been growing. Um, we've had a seventeen percent over the last year, but an eighty-seven percent increase since two thousand twenty-one. We have been.
Who makes these referrals?
I'm going to tell you that.
Oh, okay.
So we go, the referral can come in from a faculty. It can come in from a staff. It can come in from a student that can do a self-referral. Um, so we take the care team, we take the care team show on the road. Uh, we present at in-service. We present for both full-time staff and part-time faculty. We also present at all the academic divisions. So we go to all the academic divisions and give an overview of everything that the care team can provide support for. And as we've done that, more people are using the care team, um, for those referrals. Yes, they could just go, yes, they could just go to the counseling counter and say, I want help.
Would you say that, that increase that you're seeing in referrals is because of our increased outreach or because of an increased need?
Both.
Thank you.
That's the correct answer, isn't it?
I, I would be interested to know how much is from the outreach and how much is from the need?
Increased need, but making people aware of the referral, of the referral process has also, um, that I think accounts for some of the increase. But certainly nationally, that we know that there's an increased need for mental health services. So our licensed professional counselors, um, we provide short-term, solution-based counseling services for students who meet our scope of practice, who reside within the state of Michigan. Um, our counselors are licensed to provide services only to individuals in the state of Michigan. So we provide, uh, do those services either in person or virtually. And if we're doing them virtually, um, the LPC is making sure that the individual is inside the state of Michigan and that service is being provided. We have four. So our LPCs also provide non-clinical case management. And so that's for students who are receiving, already receiving mental health services from another provider or who are outside our scope of practice. So we're never going to just drop a student. So if the student, um, is in need of services that provide perhaps are outside our scope of practice, we'll provide non-clinical case management, touch base with them on a weekly basis until we're able to connect them to an outside provider. And we are very fortunate in Wash'In'All County that we have many, we have, are partnered with community mental health. We also have a lot of resources in the state of, um, in the county of Wash'In'All that we are able to provide resources to our students. And we also will provide students outside other counties as well, but we're very fortunate in that. So this gives you a sense graphically of the number of students who are utilizing counseling. Um, we've had a twenty-six percent increase over the last year. Uh, we've had a hundred and fifty-four percent increase since two thousand twenty-one in the number of students who are actually utilizing our counseling services.
We. I'm looking at the increase of a hundred and fifty-four percent since two thousand twenty-one. Is that due to the COVID time period?
Um, just asking, uh, was it, I mean, that's a huge increase. So we know nationally, we know across the state of Michigan. We also know nationally that there's been increases in the number of students requiring mental health services. Uh, we've had increased anxiety, increased depression. Um, and so this is not, um, unlike what other institutions are seeing, um, across the US.
Okay, so my next question would be, and I think I already know the answer. We have four. Is there any indication that we may need to add more counselors?
So I'm going to talk about that in a second. So we continue to meet the demand with increased LPC services. We're increasing the hours that we have LPCs available for providing counseling services. We also do a lot of activities and outreach. And so we provide, we do Wellness Wednesdays. We have Mind Your Mental Health workshops that talk about specifically about grief, about anxiety. Um, we also do our referrals to community mental health that I talked about earlier. Um, community mental health in Wash'In'All County has been a very helpful partner. Um, Mind Your Mental Health, um, these flyers, what that you see on the right side of the screen, are posted in each classroom. And so staff know if there's an issue in the classroom. Um, there's twenty-four seven resources listed here. There's also some local resources that are provided here. We also have, um, a twenty-four seven helpline. So it's WCC for you. And so that's available for students across the United States. So if a student is an online student and lives in Montana, they can still use that phone service. We also have WellTrack. That's an app that students, that all of our students are able to access. It's an app that they can put on their phone. It can help with, it gives them tools and resources that they can use for if they have anxiety or just to help them, um, deal with any kind of stress that they may be having. There's also a resource that they can look up. If I live in Montana and I'd like to have access, a resource, a counselor that specializes in perhaps gender issues, um, they can see a list of, of provide, of possible providers that could provide either through insurance or through a sliding scale services that they can access.
Okay. My colleague, Ms. Heck, you going to say something?
No, I was.
Oh. I do. No, go ahead.
No, I just wonder when you dial A T C, W C C, who in this phone?
A, a clinical, a mental health clinician.
But it doesn't work for us.
Right, does not work for us, correct. It's the twenty-four seven, yes.
That is a service we pay for.
Yes, that is a service that we pay for.
When you said, uh, former students, and so it doesn't matter if they're young or old, but they were former students, and how would that clinician know that? I mean, is there, uh, when a person calls in, well, I'm a former student or I am a student, you know what I'm saying? How would that person know that they need mental health issues other than they say, I need help? When they call that number?
When they call that number, um, it's, it's, it's provide, we're providing that service to currently enrolled students.
Currently?
Currently enrolled students. It's not for all of our past students. It's for currently enrolled students.
Okay.
And so they would ask them their email address. And so as long, I mean, they're not going to drill them on, but though, as long as a student provides a WCC email address, they would provide the screening service for them.
So is there a track of how many of our students, other than what we just saw on it? Is that what we saw?
No, that is not. That is not included on there. We do get a report each month on how many students are accessing that service. But that was not included in the, the service, the graph that I showed earlier was students accessing our WCC counseling services. Yes.
Okay, I'm done.
Okay, JED Campus is a signature program of the JED Foundation. It provides colleges and universities with customized support to protect student mental health. Uh, the JED Foundation was, is a nonprofit public charity. It was started by a family who lost their son Jed, um, by suicide. Um, and so that, they have set up these intervention programs that can help identify young adults at risk for depression and other emotional disorders and steer them to treatment, uh, before they become suicidal. So D three C three, which if you remember, is the Detroit Drives Degrees Community College Collaborative, which we're part of, has partnered with the JED Campus to provide technical assistance and evidence-based driven, evidence-based, data-driven best practices in supporting mental health for the D three C three schools. Um, the JED Campus program to date has impacted more than six point seven million students across five hundred thirty colleges and universities. So through the JED Campus program. So, through the JED Campus program, we'll have a one-year program that we, will help us assess student needs and experiences related to mental health, substance use, and well-being. It'll help us identify any gaps or opportunities we have in our current campus support systems and services, and it will inform our planning and guide enhancements to our programs and resources to support mental health at Washtenaw Community College. So, the Healthy Minds Survey, which is where the data will be gathered, was conducted for our winter students between April 21st and May 5th. So, that was the first step of this process. So, our early alerts are used to identify students, to help identify and support students who are, might be facing academic and non-academic challenges before it's too late. So, these alerts are addressed by our success coaches, who provide personalized outreach to the student. The coaches assist students in navigating any obstacles they may have, whether those be personal obstacles, academic obstacles, financial, that connects students with the resources that we have on campus. They also help students develop into complete goals, maybe they need some help with some time management, or other things that can help them, connect them to tutoring. It helps promote timely intervention, it supports retention and persistence, and it encourages a proactive and student-centered support. So, this past winter, we offered some new developmental ed classes. We worked with the faculty with our early alert tool. So, we had 488 students that were taking these developmental ed courses. 125 of those students, or 26%, received 261 early alerts during the semester. Those were submitted by the faculty either through Canvas or Blackboard, depending on how the class was offered. 12 out of the 18 faculty who were teaching those courses, or 67% of the faculty, use the early alert system. So, you can see here, we had 68 students get one alert, we had two students get eight alerts. So, you can see the number of alerts varied considerably. So, the type of alerts that we had were, you know, either midterm, the student's not doing well, their lack of participating, a general alert, having difficulty, need support. So, that's kind of a breakdown of the type of alerts we had. Here's graphically, you can see, so 40% of the alerts that we received for this developmental ed group were either lack of attendance or lack of participation. Again, we know if a student isn't attending or they're not participating, they may be struggling and not be able to pass the class. Some of the other alerts talked about either food insecurity, transportation, emergency need. So, again, depending on what that alert is, if they're having transportation, food insecurities, they'd be connected to our Student Resource Center, where they can provide bus tokens, they can provide, they can access our food pantry, they can provide food cards, you can also connect them to the foundation to get an emergency grant. So, there's all different ways that we can help support that student.
How many classes that represent sections of classes?
For the developmental, how many developmental, how many sections do we have in the new developmental classes?
So, it was approximately 18 sections that we had?
18 sections.
And that was across both math and English.
So, here's an example of how an early alert would work. So, we had a 12-week English 111S class, so English 111, which is our freshman comp, was paired with 111S, which was a support class for that class. The class started February 5th. The faculty noted in Target X, they put the note, "I'm concerned," so this, they put this note in that goes to the student, but this note also gets routed to the success coach. So, "I'm concerned that you missed the first day of the English class, make sure to attend the class on Thursday, it's important for attendance verification, just make sure that you are on track to be successful." This is an accelerated class, so instead of being 15 weeks, it was 12, and every class is important. The success coach also contacted the student via phone, email, and text in response to receiving that alert. The student replied on February 6th that they had concerns about their transportation. The student was connected to, again, Student Resource Center, they provided the student bus passes, they also required that student to check in monthly, so they give them enough bus passes for the first month of classes, check back in, "How are you doing?" to get that next, they just don't give a full semester of bus passes. Check in, let's make sure you're doing okay. So, because of what happened, the success coach maintained ongoing engagement with the student, they were getting ongoing connection with the Student Resource Center, and the student successfully passed the class.
What about the parents with children, what about childcare? Are we still doing the?
Childcare scholarship, yes, we are. Yes, we are.
Oh, good, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
You're doing great. I just would like the board to know that when you approved Target X, first of all, thank you for your trust and competence, because when you approved Target X, we didn't, we just told you that's right. We hadn't done it yet, but now, I hope you all feel good to understand what that vote was about and what the outcome of that vote, what it got us. So, I just wanted you to feel good for a moment. Now, we'll go back to the window.
So, so through the, the D3C3, our, you know, their goal is to improve access, student access to college, support academic progression, completion of a degree or certificate, again, it's all tried to how do we get more completers in southeastern Michigan. But they're focusing on, because again, institutions across all the D3C3 schools are seeing, we're having increasing numbers of students with mental health needs, sometimes that's making them not be successful in their academics. So, we have the JED Campus Partnership that I talked about earlier, they're also focusing on first-year credit attainment, they co-rect developmental class, so again, we're using that completion of, quickly get those students in their college-level courses, and then supporting student success with the removal of barriers that we've talked about.
The JED Partnership?
Yes.
Is that, where are they due exactly?
I do not, no, JED, no.
So, is it all?
It's a national, JED, the JED Foundation is a national organization, but the JED, the JED Partnership is being paid for through D3C3. So, to participate in it.
How do we engage them? Do we engage them remotely? And the reason I ask is, there's a new place in Washtenaw County, actually, do you reference, possibly in Garrett Space?
Yes.
That is, which you probably know.
Yes, I am.
Which seems both out of the, what drove the creation of it and what it does is similar to the JED and its geographical.
Correct, but they, but the JED Foundation is, you know, I am aware of Garrett's as well, but the JED Foundation really focuses on doing an entire institutional survey of your students and asking them about all their needs and what, how they, what their experiences have been, and so analyzing that data and providing that feedback, and so that's, that's a little bit more than what Garrett Space is doing at this point.
So, Garrett Space would offer potentially?
Some resources that we could access, absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. But they're going to help us say, "Hey, you have a gap over here," or "You have a gap over here," but yes, Garrett could help us fix that. So, again, we're looking at some holistic wraparound services. We provide food insecurity, we provide childcare, lots of childcare scholarships, housing instability, if we get resources, our care team resource might be, the student has indicated they've been kicked out of their apartment, they need some housing resources that we can provide to them, or their house was lost in a fire, and again, we're providing resources to help them find some additional housing, emergency assistance for immediate needs. And then, we've also received a grant from the state, the MyLeap Grant, so we received $212,000 this past fall, we have until November 2026. Again, it's looking at, are there barriers that our students are having to, having them not be successful, or there'll be childcare, transportation, money, book money, so again, it's ways, any barrier that we identify for the student, that MyLeap Grant we can use to help remove that barrier. So, now, I'm going to hand this over to Dr. Tupper.
Good evening, I'm here to give you our annual update related to our third goal, which is creating the best-in-class online campus learning experience. I'm going to start off with kind of recapping how the last academic year went related to the strategic goals that we presented to you around this time last year. Our number one goal this year was to move us from Blackboard to Canvas, and I'm happy to report that as of our spring, summer semester, we are fully off of Blackboard, 100% on Canvas. You'll notice the slide shows kind of where we started in Fall '24 and the amount of sections that we had on Blackboard, and then we kind of stepped down. We know that in Fall of '24, we also had a very small pilot, and then had a kind of larger pilot in winter to prepare us for what is now 100% being in Canvas. And you'll notice the large graph in Fall of '25, that is because mainly in spring/summer, we just run less sections, but come fall, every offering will be in Canvas. Very significant feat, and kudos to the faculty, as well as our SITL team that really worked hand-in-hand to provide a lot of training, as well as just kind of development. We offered 69 Canvas training sessions over this last year with over 1,600 attendees in both trainings and kind of one-on-one sessions. This is our full and part-time faculty, knowing that our online sections are staffed by both full-timers and part-timers. But the reformatting project, so taking those courses that were once in Blackboard, putting them in Canvas, 214 online and blended courses. We did have a Lucian, our Lucian partners helped us with 127 of those. There are 66 courses that remain, those are mainly those faculty that are working over the summer in preparation for our fall term. And from a support ticket perspective, our SITL Help Desk, which is different than our Lucian Help Desk, the SITL Desk, our team up on the third floor of GM, or second floor, they handled over 1,500 course requests, Help Desk tickets, over 2,249, but then, of course, our ITS Help Desk filled in just under 300 of those tickets. And then, there was 900 student help tickets, knowing that, as been mentioned before, our students are transitioning as well, so making sure that we provide them the support. Lucky part, though, many of our students have had exposure with Canvas, whether it was at another institution or if they're coming directly from high school, a lot of our high school partners are already on Canvas, so much easier transition for them. We have a commitment to excellence that we developed many years ago, and it's important to note that our increased online presence and development came directly from our strategic plan. While we've been in the game of doing online since 2002, 2003, the real focus to ensure that we had expanded access came really from that initial strategic plan. But there were three kind of commitment to excellence pillars that we focused on, making sure that it's quality, that the standards of quality are clear and that they are replicable, not just on ground but on campus, that we continue to provide expanded support for both students and faculty, and that support doesn't just end now that we've transitioned to Canvas, that support's ongoing, because we know there's constantly new tools and new evolutions, and we want to make sure that our faculty, staff, and students are prepared to embrace, but then also that, as we mentioned tonight earlier, that data drives what we do, right, that our innovation is data-driven, and that we use analytics to know what's working, what's not, and if it's not, how do we pivot and improve. Five overarching goals for our online kind of focus is, one, that we continue to enhance our quality and accessibility, that we promote teaching excellence, knowing that some of our best faculty are in our online environment teaching our students, and that we continue to support student success across modalities, but that we use data for continuous improvement, as I mentioned, and that we expand the reach of our program. We looked at data, and this slide is a little busy, but I'm going to try to attempt to show it, that there's three colors here. Our first color, orange, represents students that are taking on-campus classes only. Our blue, or green rather, represents those that are taking online courses only. And our blue, that represents both a student that is taking a mix of on-ground and online. And when you look at the average course load, we did this really over the last kind of three years, or fall and winter and then spring/summer, you'll notice that students that are taking a mix of online and on-ground have significantly larger course loads. For example, we look at just this spring/summer semester, when you look at the just under nine credits for a student that's taking both online as well as on-ground, compared to just under six for online and just around five for on-campus. So, what does this tell us? It tells us that for what, students are interested in both, it also shows us that we want to ensure that we have access to both, or on-ground offerings and online offers to support our students' interest. So, it was very interesting to note that.
So, it's interesting to look at this as an institution-wide number, but I'd also be interested in by programs, for example, nursing, how does that break out with these different modalities? Or welding, or pretty much anything else. So, those are specific tracks or curriculums, but it would be interesting, and I know there's just a general transfer agreement curriculum as well. But some of those seem like they might be different, like welding or nursing, for example, might be a different chart.
Absolutely, I mean, I think that in the welding example, if it was someone that was pursuing the certificate degree, it would be mainly on-campus, because they're focused on just kind of the lab experience classes. If it's somebody that's pursuing an associate's degree, they could be represented here graphically because they will be taking their JED ads as well as kind of their program-specific courses, but definitely something we could look at overlaying.
But our, our data tools would enable us to do that, to pull it out by, by curriculum?
Absolutely, by program, yep.
Okay, thank you.
So, where are we going over this next year, right? Every year that we come to you, we let you know what we've done and what's next, right? There are four themes that we want to focus on to continue to guide our excellent online experience. One is to advance our student-centered online teaching and learning. Two is to expand and elevate our online program offerings. Three is to strengthen our infrastructure and our readiness, often knowing that individuals think sometimes that our competition is the community college around the corner. Yes, that is true, however, our real competition are our four-year partners, specific to online. When we look at Western Governors University, when we look at Arizona State, when we look at University of Phoenix, we have now grown to a place in which our competition is not just our sister schools, our brother schools, but they're also our four-year partners. So, focusing on theme one, advancing student-centered online teaching and learning, for one, from a quality and accessibility standpoint, we want to ensure that 100% of our both new reviewed online courses meet quality and accessibility standards. Two, we want to ensure that from a presence and an engagement perspective, that our faculty are engaged, so students, even though they may be taking online course, they see no difference in terms of engagement for the faculty member. And then, we want to continue to provide the development to our faculty, that they're able to be trained to be the best teachers in the online experience, utilizing the tools that are here, but also the tools that are yet to come, right, knowing that this is a ever-evolving kind of playground of learning.
So, I've had recently questions about taking tests online or taking them at a testing center for faculty, and with the concern that quality, the appearance of the quality of our programs could be affected if we just do it all online and there's possibility of a student kind of gaming the system. and there's possibility of a student kind of gaming the system. Are we considering increasing requirements for in person tests taken at testing centers as part of our online program?
We are currently evaluating that. And I think that we currently have a mix of both fully online courses that have honor lock as well as in person testing in certain sections that require students to have a proctor test either at our testing center or at a testing center in their local community. So the short answer is that yes, we are looking at that. The the growth area in this, I think it's in both, right? We have students that want to have courses that are fully online. Now we have fifty two programs that can be offered fully online. But then we also have transfer students, right, that are coming here as a guest student. And we are in conversations with both our faculty and our university partners to see kind of the best course of action. Because I think that certain schools are moving toward, or transfer partners, that is, moving towards more online proctoring. There are schools that are moving to more in person testing. So we're trying to really provide a pathway for both students as well as both transfer partners too, depending on their needs and desires. So yes, we are looking at it and there could be expansion in both, of more online proctoring or more person testing.
I'd like to, at some point with the administration's permission, be able to meet with you or somebody else in this area just to more carefully put forward some of my thoughts and concerns about.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
With regard to quality and accessibility, in your first point, you say that you want to ensure that a hundred percent of new and reviewed online courses meet quality and accessibility standards. Whose standards are you meeting? What measures are you using in terms of those standards?
So there's a couple of different frameworks. One is Quality Matters, which is a online framework for ensuring quality in the online environment, as well as there are Department of Education frameworks where we look at regular substantive feedback. So making sure that we meet those standards. And then there are some some general accessibility standards, some that are changing actually in twenty twenty six, to assure compliance with those, that all of our online offerings are accessible to all students, no matter what disability they may have. So it's kind of, there's some external review standards and then there's some department advanced standards and we're trying to achieve both.
So with regard to accessibility, I know that there is, was a mandate from the previous administration to be fully accessible by the end of quarter one, twenty twenty six.
April twenty twenty six, yeah.
Yes. So can you, do you have an idea of how many of the courses that we currently offer online meet, you know, one of the WCAG standards? Two point one, two point two, two point oh? What what are you aiming for?
Two point one double A standard is what we're aiming towards. I can tell you, it comes at a perfect time because as we transition all of our courses over, we can ensure that they are meeting those standards. And the team, as they develop new courses, we're not developing any new courses that don't meet those standards. But then also, as we reformat those courses, we're ensuring that as they go out, that they're meeting those standards as well.
Okay, thank you.
Second theme, to elevate and to expand our online program offerings. For what is, as you saw the slide, is to try to have a strategy to increase our average credit course load by encouraging students as they desire, both online and in person courses, to have that mix. But then also to grow enrollment now that as of fall, we have fifty two programs that can be fully completed online. And that's a major feat of both our faculty, our Siddle staff being driven by the strategic plan that we started in twenty twelve. But then also to continue to focus on meeting the demands of our industry partners and students related to programs and degrees and certificates that we're offering online. We don't think that we're going to grow that much more on fully online. I think we've we've met pretty much close to our limit. But now it's the question of what courses do we have online? And what courses can we now take the time to go back and refine? Because now we've reached the the growth stage.
Okay. So the courses that you're looking at, are they specific type of courses for online?
There are, there will be our existing courses that we offer on ground that we would then put online. So, you know, technical communication, some of our programming courses. When we look at our associate's degree for elementary education transfer, that is seen as a growth area. So it is existing courses that we offer on ground that we place online.
Thank you.
Will you be eliminating any of the on ground courses in favor of online only delivery?
No, I wouldn't say that we would eliminate them. What we have found, though, in certain programs, there's a greater interest for online than it is on ground. Prime example is criminal justice. That used to be fully on ground, never had any online. When we moved that program, and that's one of our fully online programs, we have seen a greater interest at that, in that program to be online than on ground. So it's student choice, right? So i- in that case, are we still offering sections on ground? Absolutely. Do we offer less sections on ground and more sections online because there's a greater interest? Absolutely. And in that case, it's a lot of law enforcement professionals that are able to take those courses, you know, when they see fit versus come in a class at six o'clock in the evening or nine o'clock in the morning.
Our philosophy of offering online classes has nothing to do with pedagogy or with teaching or with learning. It has to do with what students want.
I would argue no, because we would never put a course online that from a pedagogy perspective didn't make sense. Give you an example. So our sciences, physical sciences, they have lab components. That is one that we have not been able to fully put online because from a pedagogy perspective, it is very difficult to teach that lab online. And faculty have said that, hey, this is not something that will be a great experience. Okay, so it's not online. So I think that when it doesn't make sense, that's not something we pursue. But when it does, we do it. We also look at, are there new technologies? I know that when we think about welding, one would think that you could never have welding online. What we've done now, and kudos to Dean Sabowski and Dean Rue, is looking at some of those technical areas and having mixed mode, where maybe the lecture is online, but then the lab component is still on campus. They need that hands on. But it is really, we really lean into the faculty to make sure that this is something that we can do. And there's, I can tell you, there's no course that we put online that hasn't had faculty supported faculty interest because they're the ones who developed the course and put it online.
One more question. Is there any space in this learning experience section for increased testing center?
Increased testing center. Physical space or offerings, I think would be the question, right? So there may be a need and I think we're going to assess whether or not, you know, we need to, over this next year, grow our offerings. And I think that'll drive what it looks like in terms of space. I believe that in talking to Provost Blakie, we do have some capacity to expand our offerings at this moment. So I don't think space, I don't think we're there yet. But we potentially might be looking at some expansion of when we offer those, when it's available to students to be able to test. We may have to add a, you know, Sunday afternoon or, you know, a Friday night or something like that.
We are able to guarantee to our transfer institutions that our testing is proctored and secure?
We are able to guarantee that whatever modality, and we know different transfer institutions have different expectations, right? So some are saying that online proctoring with honor lock is what they use and they're good, good to go. Others are saying that, hey, we want to see in person testing through your testing center or a faculty proctor. In that case, we've been able to accommodate that. Well, there may be some expansions. We had some conversations today with one of our partners, where we may be expanding some of our offerings.
Our standard, our standard is based on what they'll accept. Don't we have a standard for what we think is appropriate for students? Whether they're transferring or going to a job or or continuing on education? So do we have a standard or do we rely on other schools' standards?
We, no, 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 we, we have a standard as an institution. So otherwise, if we were allowing our, all of our transfer partners to drive the ship, we would be like ships in the night crashing because everybody's going to have a different expectation. But we do have a base standard in which we do now, which is some classes have online proctoring, some classes have go to the testing center or faculty that actually want to proctor them themselves in a virtual environment, which we talked about earlier today. So there is multiple measures of assessment and proctoring. And it does depend on the course and the department.
We're sure that what we're doing for various courses and departments meets our standards.
Yes. I've not been told otherwise.
I'd like to reinforce my colleague's concern in this area. Something I've heard about as a, as a concern, if we're transferring students, particularly if we're transferring students with an associate degree, the four year institutions, I think we want the greatest integrity possible for them to trust the students coming from our institution that met all the course requirements with the highest degree of integrity in testing. And that's why I think this testing center and online. The whole honor lock thing, I think there are issues. And it's something that I'd like us to recognize that and where we can to make, make sure that we're offering in person opportunities at testing centers so that people, that where our students are going, the institutions can rely on the quality of the education that they've received at Washington Community College. And I'm totally with Ruth on this.
If that's the case, I know we've discussed this before in the past several times about the testing center. And naturally, my colleague brought it up that, but I think, you know, far as I I know, I came from here many moons ago. And whatever the testing was done when I came through was all, there is no question about it. So what you're saying now is that there could be some questionable questions regarding the the testing center. And what I'm, I'm also concerned that if this is the case, is it coming from a student, many students or no students? And it's coming from hearsay or is it coming from the university side? I mean, we're talking about different variables and options here, not just one person.
I, I, I understand your sentiment and your concern and question. And you'll see later, it is part of our goals to take a look at this, you know, next year. But, you know, our standard is we're going to have testing that is accurate and our faculty are accountable, whether it's online or if it's face to face. So we never, we've never lowered our standard. So that will never happen. But there is a conversation that we will have and, yeah, I agree. We all agree to do that.
If I want to hear, I want some settlement of it. This keeps coming up.
This is a big, this is a really big discussion because there's, there's your personal opinion, which could be based on my personal opinion, based on my experience and your experience and everyone's experience. There's your personal opinion, which is a good thing. Then there's a professional opinion, looked at research, looking at what we can look at, what's the right thing to do. So we just have to weigh all of the different alternatives to look at what is the best answer. That's all. And no one's, everyone is right. There isn't one person here that's incorrect. We're all right. We just have to figure out the right path. And that's what we'll do.
I would just like to add that I would hope regardless of standards in other institutions or even standards in some industry, that our standards are the highest possible, regardless of what their standards are. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I don't want to rely on another institution's standards. I want our standards to be the best, period, anywhere.
We've never changed them. We've never changed our standards. They're the same ones for sixty years.
Julie, don't it. Theme three, strengthened infrastructure institutional readiness. Want to, this year, of course, achieve full compliance with our minimum usage expectations around regular and substantive feedback that we we fully implement an updated review and revision cycle for all online courses. As I mentioned, now that we've reached kind of the 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 peak of our growth, knowing that we're still going to grow a little more, but now we're able to go back and refine. So we've updated kind of our review and revision cycle so that we're more regularly looking at all of our courses. And the good thing about us migrating to Canvas is that we were able to look at every course. We were able to look at the the course that was developed in two thousand four all the way to the course that was developed in two thousand twenty two, twenty three. And then, of course, we want to continue to increase our capacity from an instructional design perspective, equality assurance, and then, of course, faculty support. Knowing that our competition, once again, is not just our community colleges. Our competition is our four year institutions. Using data to drive improvement and innovation, as you saw earlier from Provost Blakie, looking at that student success data and being able to track how are students performing in our fully online versus our mixed mode sections, for example. But then also continue to encourage faculty to use early alerts, knowing that when they're used, that it will reduce retention and completion gaps, specifically for online learners. And then, of course, increasing capacity by providing faculty with the data so that they can see kind of the variances and for their own review, be able to make changes or pivots based upon, you know, seeing the feedback. But then lastly, looking at just how we market our online programs, right? So looking at those programs that are in strong demand, I'll give you an example. When we look at our business programs, those programs are really ripe to be able to grow significantly. Why? Because there's interest, because of transferability. And so looking at how we market those externally. But then also continue to position our online offerings as both being high quality and flexible. And then looking at, maybe looking at tailoring some, some marketing campaigns to elevating the strength of our programs. And then, of course, our student outcomes when we look at those getting employment. Definitely want to lift the financial implications when we look at the number of enrollments that our fifty two now programs online have been able to produce. We generated over the last fiscal year proxy sixteen point nine million dollars. And this is purely online and or mixed mode revenue. So knowing that this is no longer kind of a small strategy, but this is a very large strategy. These are significant enrollments that our institution is garnering each year. And then lastly, just closing up, that we are continuing to be committed to having an excellent online experience that mirrors what we have on campus. And that if we continue to drive this strategy, that we're going to strengthen academic excellence, expand, expand our access and flexibility. expand, expand our access and flexibility, but then also continue to sustain that enrollment on the financial health of, of, of our institution. And our goal is to continue to position us as a leader in delivering high-quality innovative online education. And of course, none of this could be done without our faculty because they are our backbone. Both our central staff, I wish that team works night and day with ensuring that our faculty, our students and our staff have the support they need. But then the dynamic duo, as I call them, Dr. Heidi Schuler, who was our online learning strategist, you might remember. She's a researcher from the Lucian that has been with us now for a few years. And a lot of our strategy has been able to be lifted through her expertise. And then, of course, the hiring of Carl as our Dean of Academic Services to lead our central team, them working hand-in-hand are now seeing the fruits of what was literally just kind of a vision as we started our strategic plan in 2012 to now 13 years later, where we're at. Center for Interactive Teaching and Learning. That is our formerly known distance learning department.
That's how they designed it.
Yeah, that was their, their design. Yeah, it might be, no.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you so much. And I'm now going to turn it over to CFO Barnes to be our campus master.
Good evening. We're coming to the end of our presentation. In fact, if you look at the shaping our collective future graphic to my far right, we're at the far right of the graphic portion, the new master plan is where we are on the map. So before I get into what we're doing, I just want to define what are we talking about? So for those of you who might be less familiar with the steps involved, there are two steps generally. First, we need to do a space utilization study. And second, we actually could do the campus master plan. So what's involved in a space utilization study? So that's looking at our existing spaces, our classrooms, our labs, our offices, and trying to figure out where we're inefficient, where we're underutilized, and how we can better reallocate so that we can have more effective use of our spaces. And basically, this gives us the data to drive data-driven decisions to, to optimize those spaces. Once that spatialization is done, which we'll talk about in a moment, then you turn to your master plan, which is a long-term blueprint for the physical development of the campus. We want to make sure that our physical infrastructure is aligned with our faculty needs and our student needs and emerging educational trends. We also want to make sure that everything's aligned with our institutional mission, our academic goals and future needs. And the campus master plan focuses on lots of different things. It focuses on how we use the land that we have here. We have 285 acres. We want to make sure that we're using it all effectively, optimizing our existing spaces, as I mentioned, a facility functionality, how can we better utilize the functions of our facilities, the circulation around campus, and also just the sustainability of the campus in general. There may be opportunities for increased sustainability. So those are just kind of the definitions. Now we get into the space utilization itself. So we've, we've completed this initial stage, the space utilization study, very recently. So we have, we have the data in hand. So we have the data. This study was led by a firm called Rick's Associates. Their expertise lies in higher ed planning. So they've helped us walk through the process and helped us understand our data. So how did they do that? It's by walking through and asking us questions and, and looking at the data that we provided to them. And it looks at how well we're using our space. They're looking at, are there opportunities to repurpose space? And how could we potentially use these spaces more efficiently? So we're not going to go in deep dive into the data tonight. That's for the next stage when we get into the master plan. But that's, just want to reemphasize that that data is what's going to inform what, what do we do when we get to the master, master plan? And again, the goal is to make sure that every square foot on this campus aligns with our mission, vision and values exactly as Executive Director Morrison said at the very beginning of the presentation. Everything we do, including the master plan, has to align with our mission, vision and values. Yes?
Oh, this comprehensive study was already done?
Correct, we just concluded it very recently.
And we see a copy of it, individual board notes?
Yeah.
That's not a problem.
Would be really interesting to see where we are right now with that. Before we get into the master plan.
Yeah.
So we can kind of rethink about it.
You'll be involved in the planning of the master plan.
Correct, but I'd like to take a look at where, where they see opportunities in advance of just being called into a meeting.
I would like to say this is something that we could do as a retreat for that master plan.
True, but I'd still like to see this ahead of that.
Well, maybe so before we have a retreat, yes. But I don't want it right now. I mean, you know.
Well, I do.
Because we have, you know.
Or as soon as possible. I just think if, if we have the information, it benefits us and our decision-making down the road if we could look at, have time to look at it and think about. Thank you.
Say it.
I'm sorry, no. So why do we need a new campus master plan? The last time we did a campus master plan was 2019. So that was right before COVID. And our campus master plan at that time pretty much immediately became obsolete because online teaching became very prevalent in the higher ed world. So we had to rethink, we have to rethink this. Plus, just the pace of technology generally has necessitated the revisiting of master plans about every five years, whereas in the past, you would may have looked at this more like every 10 years. So we're starting to look at this a little more frequently. But we want to look at, make sure we're looking at options because there are evolving student needs. There are evolving learning preferences. As I've mentioned, online has become more prevalent. And there's also a lot more expectations for campus flexibility, both from faculty and from students. Also services, we saw in Provost Blakey's presentation, things we do for wellness, mental wellness, physical wellness for students on campus and emerging technologies. So we start putting this together, we're going to be looking at, well, you know, are there opportunities? What do we do with our classrooms? Do we have too many classrooms? Do we have too few classrooms? What about our labs? Do we need more labs? Do we need less labs? And within those classrooms, do we need to do different, something differently within the classrooms? Does a faculty need a more flexible space? So maybe they need something for traditional teaching plus some rearrangeable furniture for collaboration activities. Outside the classroom, we want to put in, make sure we have very strong Wi-Fi all around the campus. That's one thing, you know, it's very, very effective and needed by students. Making sure they have it not only in the classrooms, but outside here in the green space as well. Also, there's been trends in higher ed looking for more private spaces, you know, so you can perhaps sit and study quietly on campus in places or maybe having more active spaces. So outside of your class, you can get together with your group for, for a group project, debate things, put it together, and you've got a space to do that.
I have visited other colleges in-state and out-of-state, how the colleges made specific spaces for the students to talk and be together, like in little, little coves.
Yes.
Yeah. And I think, I don't know if we are able to do that here, but I think it would be something that I've always had in my mind that could be, yeah.
So these are options that we're exploring, right? It doesn't mean, anything I say doesn't mean we're going to do it. But these are things that are out there that we're going to explore and talk.
This is a lot.
No, no, I, you probably remember the last time we did a master plan was 2019, whatever. I mean, COVID hit.
Yeah.
So you probably remember how we did it with the facilitator, how we looked at data, how we looked at all the external sources, how we looked at the, at that time, how we looked at the utilization, campus utilization facts. And based on that, everyone had input on what they see for the future. You might recall that. We'll probably, we're going to use the exact same process. The answers might be different because this is five years later and everything has changed. So it'll be, it is very exciting. Thank you.
So.
I just double-checked that Paul asked all the components of hours were consulted in this utilization questions.
The spatialization study was largely data gathering. So a lot of it came from the data that we have about, for example, in the classroom, how many seats are filled for each class? Are, is it, you know, it's, it's actual, the actual data. How many classrooms are used from eight o'clock in the morning until eight o'clock in the evening? So how many hours per day? So it's a lot of data that was going to, so we haven't really gotten too deep into the, well, what do we want to do? That's, that's the actual master plan phase, which is in fiscal year 20, this coming fiscal year, fiscal year 2016.
So in some master plans that I have looked at, some institutions use those master plans to focus on how they intend to use their space to develop or support new academic programs. Is there any component of the master plan that takes the need, the space needs of potentially new programs?
Yes.
In, into account?
Yeah, those can be conversations that we talk about, all those things, including for existing, existing programs may, may need more space. They may need less space, but we may have new programs that we need to plan for, absolutely.
And the master plan will also take into account the needs of WTMC?
Yes, yes. The whole campus is, is comprehensive. Again, even office space is comprehensive.
All right. Cut it out.
So finally, what are the next steps? As, as President Blanca mentioned, we're going to be selecting a planning partner, someone that'll help facilitate these conversations so that we get to the right answers for what we want to do in the next several years. We're going to provide that partner with the data that we've talked about, the results of the study that we have, as well as starting the conversations. So we'll have a WCC working group and that, those groups will include sessions with faculty, with staff, with students, with the trustees, to make sure that we have a plan. Probably go through several iterations. This isn't something we'll sit down in, in an afternoon and do. So to go through several iterations until we come up with a final recommendation. So in, in total, this will probably take us the better part of a year. So this is, the RFP is out right now. We haven't selected the partner yet, but again, I wouldn't expect this to be done until late in the coming fiscal year. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Along with the copy of the space utilization study that we've already completed, I'd like to see a copy of the RFP that went out. I mean, that sets, that tells people what we're looking for.
Administrative requests should come through the present, remember?
Okay, sorry.
Thank you, Terry.
All right, anything else on the strategic plan?
No, of course, all set.
All right, thank you. Wow, that was a great report. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Lot of detail.
Yeah.
Okay, we're going forward to our monthly reports, tab B, everybody. Tab B, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the personnel recommendations as submitted. Do I hear a motion? For, for, thank you. Any discussion on this? Any comments?
Sort of cleared up already, but the full-time new hires for police recruiting, that's for the academy or for our police force? Yes, which?
It's for, it's for our two officers who will be going through the academy.
These two officers will be going through the academy?
Yes.
Gotcha, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, moving on to tab C, the financial report. Before we go through the report, VP Barnes, welcome back. Would you like to highlight anything here?
Like I never left. Yes, very quickly, we're heading into the home stretch of the academic year and the fiscal year. So we've started last Monday, the spring/summer semester. But these financials here are from the end of April, so they'll continue to evolve over the next couple of months. But you can see here, oh, let me, let me scroll down to the financials. So you can see for the spring tuition, we are, we're favorable so far as of the end of April by about $100,000. At the, at the time, at the end of April, our headcount was up about a half a percent and our credit hours were up about 2.9%. However, this number is only going to improve in May. When we started our classes and as of today, our enrollment's up about 4% and our credit hours are up about 7.5%. So that $100,000, $109,000 should improve a bit between now and the end of the fiscal year. So the total tuition and fees there, the $1.9 million favorable variance should go up a bit by the end of the year. Local property taxes, as I explained last month, is turning out to be a little more negative than we thought. I, I do think, expect it to improve a little bit over the next couple of months, but we will finish the year slightly negative, that, that one. But I do expect it to be more than offset by the state appropriations. State appropriations have come in favorable. And I know that, for example, the LCSA, which was formerly the personal property tax, I know that even though these are the financials as of the end of April, I know that as of May, we've gotten that second payment and it did come in favorable to what we were thinking. So this $518,000 favorable should be a little bit better. So it more than offsets, or it will more than offset the, the property tax unfavorable variance. Trade partnerships continues to trend well, 600. Investment income, again, interest rates continue to remain relatively elevated. So I would expect that number to continue to improve a little bit over the next couple of months. Other slight negative variances, a lot of pluses and minuses there, but likely will remain negative through the end of the fiscal year. And auxiliary activities, very favorable in terms of conference services as well as public surplus, which is where we sell our equipment. For example, this reached the end of its useful life. And in terms of expenditures, really mostly favorable variances here. Utilities has been negative pretty much throughout the year. Although, you know, the facilities team has done a great job of arresting the negative variance very early in the year and it hasn't gotten any worse than it was in the first couple of months of the year. So I expect that to pretty much be where we finish. And I don't, I would expect that 6.9, probably going to be right around there, perhaps slightly better. Although I, I know that most departments begin to try to spend off some of their budget toward the end of the year, so. Any questions?
Questions with VP Barnes?
I'll make a motion that we receive the financial reports for April 2025, general fund, capital fund, combined schedule of investments, all funds as submitted.
Thank you, I'm just writing this down for the minutes so that I don't forget. Vanessa had to step out. Dave did the motion to approve the financial reports and then Diana seconded it. Or Bill seconded it? Bill seconded it, okay, thank you. All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing that, thank you. All right, moving on to tab D, the facilities development report, AVP Whipstock. Anything you want to highlight here for us?
Good evening. I'd like to review with you some of the more notable projects from our development reports. First one being the shipping and receiving building. We're in the final stages of construction. Lighting's in, drywall's up. It's there today and they're actually installing the last half of the ductwork. The heating system is up. Target date for move-in is June 8th for mechanics. Target date for move-in is June 8th, for mechanics and grounds to move into that area. Next one is our camera upgrade project. As you can see, some of our, most of our emergency phones are in, our cameras are up on the buildings. We have about six more cameras to install for completion of the camera project. Next one is the student center restroom renovation. All the demo work has been done. We are, all the piping has been updated. A lot of the galvanized pipe that was in there had to come out. We repiped it with copper piping. We had some electrical work that had to be updated as well, and it's actually moving forward. We're starting to install the, the walls and the ceiling. One of the other projects that is on the list is the UA training structure. UA asked us to expand that, that structure that's out there. We extended the pad, and we're also extending the structures so they can do more rigging training out there. This project is also 100% funded by the UA. We're just implementing it.
Sure. We are staggering the student center restrooms, right? So, people have a place to go to the bathroom?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We're doing half at a time.
Great, thanks. I hope we're doing the women's half for, no, never mind.
Next one is the green fund. We actually just took delivery of our third electric mower, which is very popular with the grounds crew. Everybody likes using those things. We also just ordered our first electric high-low. That should be coming in within the next 60 to 90 days. EV charger installs. This is over at the shipping and receiving building. We're getting the cement poured. Most of the, in fact, today, they were setting the, the transformers and the panel boards out there. However, that project will not be finalized till in August because of a panel board that was put together in Mexico and has been delayed in shipping. So, we, we have that, and also the OE expansion panel, which has both been delayed till about August time period.
Sure. Since that was delayed in its shipment from Mexico, are we getting an unexpected expense from, or unbudgeted for the tariff?
We have been notified that that could be a possibility, yes. And EML chargers, as you can see, when you go out here, we pour the pads out, we got the piping in. That, we'll be setting the chargers and everything probably within the next couple of weeks. In front of the EML building, there'll be four charging stations for four cars. I'm sorry, there's four charging stations for eight cars. There's two cars per charging station.
Yeah, okay.
All right, parking lot renovation, we have the RFPs out. I know the last time there was a question on how long we were getting our parking lots. Two that we're proposing to do, last, two and three, the last time they were resurfaced was in 1999 and 2003. So, we're getting over 20 years of use out of our parking lots. The asphalt, asphalt pavers association of Michigan says typically you should get about 15 to 20 years out of a parking lot in Michigan, so we're at least getting that. So, these two lots, once these are done, and then the main roadway around the campus, all the surfaces will have been resurfaced, and probably the next time we'll be bringing one to you would be 2045.
I'll be right in.
All right, any other questions?
Yeah, thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, moving on to remarks. Do any trustees want to make some remarks?
Yes, I wanted to say that I, I attended the honors graduation and was pleased to see that there was a significant increase. So, I'm thankful to our faculty, staff, and everyone involved with making sure that our students get what they need and helping them continue on in their educational journey. I, it was, it was really nice, and then the spill over, I don't want to steal anybody else's thunder, and we all attended the Saturday's event, but it was just really nice to see all of our students, they worked so hard, and they all have their own stories. There's a gentleman that I met outside of my workplace, I can't remember where I was at, but it was fairly recent, and he stated that he had attended WCC, and he divulged a story, which I can't remember, so you gotta forgive me about that, but his story was just resonant on how much he enjoyed being here. And it's the common theme, and for me, in my opinion, those who have come in contact with it, that the classrooms, the classroom size, the student and teacher ratio was always on point. If not, you know, they were able to get their, their educational needs satisfied. They didn't, this particular person didn't do any online, but his story was that it came at a critical time in his life, that he needed something, and to help redirect the path that he was on, and WCC made that happen for him. So, still, again, you know, kudos to the, to the faculty, the staff, administrative staff here today, and even the board, you know, for, yes, we are critical thinkers, yes, we're going to bump heads, yes, you know, we're going to argue and fuss, but, you know, we're here to make sure that our students are successful, and so, that's all I want to say. It was awesome, Thursday and Saturday. Thank you.
I'd just like to add to that. I've been going to graduations, hopping on actually, for about 40 years, and for the very first time, my significant other, my husband, came to graduation. He wanted to hear comes in, but he came to graduation, and his comment was that he was heartened to see so many people, young and old, diverse, who were out there doing something good. He watches CNN too much, and was very heartened by what he saw at graduation, so I thought I'd share it.
Go ahead, Diana.
Yes, I was at the graduation, and I just always loved it. I always asked questions, and some of the people I spoke with, they're going on to get their four-year degree, and they're excited, they couldn't talk, walked away, and, you know, some hands were so cold, it felt like you were touching ice cubes. But it was just so exhilarating to see all, everyone that crossed that stage was so excitable and, and didn't know what to do with themselves. They were walking off the stage, trying to leave out, and it was really fun to see that. Anyway, I want to debate, debate, deviate, thank you. Last Thursday and Friday, I was at, in Detroit, at Wayne County Community College, and it was the Michigan Community College Association Conference, Legislative Conference. And first of all, if you have not been to Wayne County Community College, you're missing something because it's massive, and I didn't realize how massive it was, and that was just one campus downtown then, so we were there, and then where we actually had our meeting was at another campus, Southwest Campus, and that was huge. So, anyway, there was a lot of things discussed, and I tried to keep notes, but it was so much being said, but they talked about operation funding of 3% ongoing for grants, or the formula, whatever that formula is. And then tuition at 4, 4.5%, or 227 for year 2026. I'm just skimming over some of my notes. There's a competitive, Michigan Competitive Scholarship that's going to be phased out. Michigan Tuition Grant is going to be phased out. Recruitment and re-enrollment for students is not included in the governor's appropriations. I really talked about appropriations, really. Two million one time dual enrollment task force is not included. The governor vetoed the dual enrollment deal, MCCA letters to Lansing, and asking anyone who has any thoughts, you can write a letter to your senator or representative. And then they talked about the reconnect program, and there's different scenarios. There's a scenario, scenario A and scenario B. Scenario A is 20, 2026, that the reconnect would meet, 26 would, they would meet their requirement. 27, if they don't meet their requirement, there is probation, and in 28, at low performing status, status. So, they don't go anywhere because they have to get out by 28 if they don't meet these requirements that they're asking for, and I just couldn't get down on scenario B. Also, the proposed dates do not, the proposed dates does not meet the increase for five years, which is 2%. So, we're looking at community colleges of getting 2% increase. Let me look real quick. And then MCCA has a, it's called GO project grant, and that's something that the presidents would know about more. This, this is really talking to the presidents about this piece, but it's a grant, GO project. And then there's a Kersey operational grant of 12 million dollars, and I don't know if Terry heard about that, that 12 million grant, Kersey Foundation?
I see.
Kersey, I thought they said Kersey. Could be Kresky, I don't know. You haven't? Okay, well, there's a grant of 12 million dollars, so that's something to check into. Then they discussed Leadership Academy modules. There's snapshots from '25 to '26, MCCA Leadership Academy, and modules six times over two days. So, these modules are training modules, and it's over two days, and at the GO six times, three probably each day, and so whoever does that, they're, you know, we're talking to presidents, not little old me. And one more thing I want to say, MCCA Summer Conference, Mackinac Island, I hope we can go, board members.
What is it?
It is July 30th through August the 1st, so we're only talking about a couple of days.
Some inside knowledge on something happening? Be there or be square?
I know.
Okay, Bill and then Eileen.
As we say, we'll find out. Thank you.
Meanwhile, back at commencement, it was a pleasure to be on the platform on Saturday with Tom Butman, who received an honorary degree from us. Tom has been instrumental in helping formulate a lot of the coursework here with, you know, members of the staff, and he's a, a fine example of an honorary degree holder.
Thank you. I would like to acknowledge the passing of Bert Lowe, who taught at the college from 1968 to 2000, in the, in the industrial technology and drafting departments. When I worked here, I had the privilege of working with Bert, and he was not only an outstanding teacher, but just a phenomenal human being, and so, we are poor for not having Bert with us any longer.
Heather?
I'd like to underline that about Bert. He was always hugging and laughing and supportive of everyone and positive. I'd also like to encourage board members to write a check to WCC for students at the Park Bridge Community Center summer program. I think it's good.
Okay.
It's 378 per student, it will, will cover a student for the summer, but any portion of that would be fine, and write the check to WCC, and in the note, Park Bridge Summer Session would be, it's, and, and if you write a check, then you have to go to graduation in August, which is the most fun I have in August, so there.
What is that?
I don't know.
Yes.
Brandon?
August 8th.
Okay. Philly.
City.
August 8th, yep.
What's for it?
It'll make you write a check for 700.
Are those checks tax deductible?
It's, it's two college for Park Ridge, so I don't know.
I will just not.
August.
I believe it's tax deductible at the federal level, but not state.
Would?
August 8th.
Would a donor advised fund be able to donate? Charitable fund? I'll, I'll ask those questions later.
Any other comments from the board? All right. President Blanca had to step out, so we're going to move on to old business and finish the agenda. So, old business, tab E, the resolution to approve the 2025-26 tax levy for general operations. The recommendation is that the board approve the tax levy of an estimated 3.3429 mils for operations as submitted. The estimated 3.3429 mils will generate approximately 80 million, 351,302 of gross tax revenue. Do I hear a motion?
I move that we approve the 2025-2026 tax levy of an estimated 3.3429 mils for operations.
Great, thank you. Any discussion on this? Any questions or discussion? Go ahead, Dave.
I just want to, once again, as I, I intend to vote for this, to thank the residents of Washington County, the taxpayers, and for being strong supporters of this college, and I want to thank the administration of the college for being able to continue to operate in a way that allows us to offer to our in-county residents, who are, of course, these taxpayers, among the lowest rates possible for tuition, $99 per credit tuition rate with a $10 infrastructure fee added to it, which puts us right at the bottom of rates for community colleges in the state, and is an opportunity for people of all economic levels to continue their higher education, and I'd, thanks to the taxpayers to allow us to continue to do this, providing a high-quality education to our county residents.
So, any other questions or discussion? Vanessa call the roll? Yes?
Senator Davis? President DiBardi?
DiBardi, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Borden?
Yes.
Trustee Milliken?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Tab F, approval of the proposed budget. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the total revenue and total expenditures and transfers of, for 2025-26 budget as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions on tab F? Anybody? Okay, hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Mudding?
Yes.
Senator Davis?
Yes.
President DiBardi?
DiBardi, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Borden?
Yes.
Trustee Milliken?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, because Dr. Blanca had to step out, I'd like to, we'd like to re- Now, because Dr. Blanca had to step out, I'd like to, we'd like to reschedule her evaluation, but, so before I move to modify the agenda, I want to know from the trustees if our alternate date of June 4th works for you guys, or if you could at least let Vanessa know within a day or two, if it's okay.
Time?
Can you give, to let her know in a day?
Time. What time?
Oh, what time? Is it 5:00 or 6:00? You're good, Bruce? Okay? You're good? Okay.
We had to say June 4th.
Yeah, June 4th at 5:00 or 6:00. Do we have a preference? I don't have a preference.
I could do that.
5 o'clock is okay? Okay, we're going to say 5 o'clock then. All right, and if you, and if anybody does have a problem, please just contact Vanessa on that.
And that's a closed session for personnel evaluation?
Correct, for personnel evaluation, yep.
So Larry, I don't know, do we notify that with public notices, and then people can come to make public speaking beforehand?
Yes.
And then we go into the closed session?
Exactly.
Okay.
We're just scheduling another session like we do? Okay. Yeah, June 4th, 5 o'clock.
5 o'clock?
We'll say 5 o'clock for now. Are you out of town? Okay. As long as we have most, I think we are. All right. All right. Okay, so at this time, I'd like to make a motion to modify the agenda so that we just adjourn our monthly meeting. Support, thank you. Is this a roll call for modifying the agenda?
We'll modify the agenda and then adjourn.
Okay, okay. But we have to call a roll call to modify the agenda? Okay, just want to make sure.
And is that a roll call or a voice phone?
We could do a voice phone.
It's not, it's not money.
Okay, so we can, I can just say all in favor. Okay, so all in favor of modifying the agenda to go to adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? All right. Now, I'd like to move to adjourn our monthly meeting. All right, I'd like to move.
I'll move.
You'll move?
I support it.
Support, thank you. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, meeting adjourned.
We're done?